We're going to go ahead and call the ordinance. This is the Grandberry City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:00 PM on 27th of the 3rd, 2024. We are located in Grandberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Grandberry, Texas. Subs, only zero before eight. For that, I'm going to call the ordinance. I invite Lieutenant Lowell Rook and Brock, Senior Pastor of Hope Community Church in Gatlin, for the Grandberry Vol. Fire Department to give the education and number ten to your service. Please begin. Thanks, sir.
Council Mayor, thank you for having me tonight. Please bow your heads. Father, I thank you that we live in a country where we can come together, we can pray over our meetings, we can continue to seek you. Lord, tonight I ask that you give wisdom and understanding, the kind seen in Colossians 1:9, Lord, over this council, over the people leaving our city, Lord. Let them continually seek you, Lord. Give them wisdom and understanding, Lord. Clear vision as they move forward and lead this city ahead, Lord. Lord, keep the people of this city safe and prosperous in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Hope you'll join me in the pledge. My pledge is to the bloodline of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, being indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you all very much. We have a couple of proclamations up and down front in just a second, but we have one for September 11, 2024, as Patriot and National Day of Service. And remember, we will do that on the first. And then the second one is the time of September 17 through 23, 2024, as Constitution Week. I'm sure there's people here from more...
Memorial Lane.
Memorial Lane? Almost four. Four, no. Over here, no? If I did find it, I'd want that in the shops. Come on.
I got that.
Where you even goes.
Yeah, one guy is beautiful women. Some god can't be.
Thorns and no roses. Okay. I'm going to read this official proclamation and I will just ask that you take a think back to, or maybe not, but to September 11, 2001. Over here. September 11, 2024. Whereas on September 11, 2001, the American people endured with courage and heroism the worst terrorist attack on the United States soil in our nation's history, and came together in remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity, performing countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. Whereas each year on this suffer day, we remember those who lost their lives at the World Trade Center in Kentucky and in the field in southwest Pennsylvania. We pay tribute to those who rose in service and we honor those who continue to serve our country today. Whereas as community, we honor the people who aided the innocent victims of those attacks, risking and often sacrificing their own lives. And whereas Memorial Lane, the Jim Burks Firefighter's Memorial Park provides the community and opportunity to recognize the value in services and sacrifices given each day by members of our armed forces and first responders. Now therefore, I, Jim Burks, Mayor of the City of Grandberry, do hereby proclaim September 11, 2024, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance in Grandberry, Texas. And urge our citizens to sit aside September the 11th as a day to unite, reflect, and remember those who gave their lives on this day 23 years ago. The Friends of Memorial Lane invite the community to participate in a remembrance service at the Jim Burks Firefighter Memorial Park on Wednesday, September the 11th, 2024, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Grandberry on this third day of September 2024 to Jerry Mayor. Thank you, and would so many ladies like to do more?
It is his event.
Thank you, sir. September 11, 2001, 2,977 people lost their lives. We'd like to remember them, and we'd also like to honor the 343 firefighters, 72 law enforcement officers, and eight EMTs that lost their lives in New York City every day, and 125 service members that lost their lives at Pennon on... We got a special guest, he's coming up from Fort Worth, coming down from Fort Worth. He works with the Townes and Towers Foundation, and they will be bringing an artifact down from the World Trade Center to be on display there for the ceremony. So if you guys can spare a little bit of time on September 11, 7:00 PM, I'd love to have you all out there for me.
You want to give a couple of words? What do you have, please? This is to recognize Constitution Week. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and republic dedicated to rule by law. Whereas September 17, 2024 marks the 237th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to attend the patriotic celebration which will commemorate it. And whereas public law 915 generates the issue of a proclamation each year from the President of the United States of America designated September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, being resolved that I, Jim Jerry, Mayor of the City of Grandberry, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 2024, as Constitution Week in Grandberry, and urge our citizens to reaffirm the ideals and frameworks of the Constitution Act in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this garden of our liberties, given under my hand and the seal of the City of Grandberry on this third day of September 2024, Jim Jerry, Mayor. So thank you, ladies, for coming up. [applause]
We hope you all will celebrate Constitution Week. We have several things going on in this school. We have a tea at Langton Hall, and we... This is an important week, and we hope you all are aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Indeed, the tea is September 17, and take your time, a few moments to get ready to pull out your constitution and kind of review it and remember what it says. It's important, and that we teach our youngsters coming up about it, so we need to know about it first. Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
We are also going to, to ask the City Council and the City Manager to issue an inclusion of statements recognizing the city staff.
We believe we have a video that we would like to share that kind of brags on our folks, and we want to take this moment to share it with the community.
Well, recognition, proclamation, and presentation. With this 170 degree temperature that we have, we're able to recognize every person that we have that's working outside in any way, form, fashion. Mr. Crawford?
Mayor, I do want to recognize the workers that are out in the seat. I think that's good. What's really good about that is it gives people an opportunity to see some of the things they never expected that we did, and so thanks for putting that together. Good job.
Yeah. You injected this? Jeff?
I have a team.
You have a team. Well, that's great because that's...
Mayor, including interns.
Standing. Very good. Council, other comments? Okay. We'll move right along then to public comments on agenda items for non-publicary agenda items. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes, and I don't have any over here, so we'll go ahead and skip the verbiage on that. These are all for citizens' participation. And we'll move right on this to the consent agenda, and all items of the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items will be approved with one motion. However, it should leave the member of the City Council to discuss any item said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Then were any items that you want to remove, draw back and put on the deliberations agenda? I don't see any here yet, so do I hear a motion to approve the use of agenda? No movement? Second here?
Second.
Mr. Crawford, second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That passes six and O. Now we'll move to 7.1, and I'm going to ask that all of us to bear with me on this because there's some very precise language that needs to be made as motions in these next two agendas. But, Mr. Crawford, I'll turn this to you, then all over the public hearing after this.
Thank you. As a backdrop, before the public hearing, it might be good to show the video that was created for the budget workshop, and pretty much explains the budget in a very detailed fashion, so I'm hoping y'all are able to play that.
On behalf of the City of Grandberry, here's an explanation of the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2025, which actually begins October 1st, 2024. The city's budget is a detailed plan of where the money comes from and where it will be spent to uphold the city's mission and vision for the future. By law, the city cannot plan the spend more than it brings in. Here are the citywide expenditures by type. Where does the money come from? The biggest source of money for the city of Grandberry is not property tax, it's sales tax. When you buy a comparable, you have to differentiate, the total cost is $11.36. Of that, 8.25% or 87 cents is sales tax. The state keeps 66 cents, the county gets 5 cents, the city gets 16 cents. Sales taxes collected in levels, everything is sold at the retail level and online. Grandberry collected about $12.3 million in sales tax in the fiscal year that ended in September 2023. That's a lot of money, but here's the good news. Sales tax is paid by both residents and tourists. When visitors buy meals and merchandise at our stores, they're paying taxes, and a portion of that is private for the city of Grandberry. As more people visit and purchase things, the city collects more sales tax. There's another tax that benefits Grandberry residents, but doesn't come out of their pockets, it's the hotel occupancy tax. When people visit here, it's paid hotels, hotels, and then at breakfast, and then for 13% is added to their bill. The state gets 6%, the city keeps 7%. This past year, the city collected more than $1.1 million in hotel occupancy tax, and almost all of it was paid by people who don't live in Grandberry. The current property tax rate is 38.5 cents. As of today, the proposed rate for next year is the same, 38.5 cents. For a $300,000 home, the annual city portion of homeowner's property tax bill stays the same. Under the proposed rate in our example, for the same $1,155 as last year, you'll be getting excellent police and fire protection, city street maintenance, beautiful parks, tourism, building code plan review and inspection, planning and zoning, economic development, municipal court, mosquito control, animal control, and many more services and the people management and infrastructure to operate the city. One thing that's important now, the city does not send the evaluation of your home, the local appraisal district does. Over the last decade, appraised values have been increasing in our thriving community. City councils have considered the rising property appraisals and intentionally kept the city's tax rate at or below other cities. There are a few more valuable resources of city revenue to explain. First, a quick explanation of the city's own utilities and revenue they bring in. Customers are charged for what they use, the cost of operating and maintaining the systems, and as well as some money collected of unanticipated future growth. Like everything else, the cost of operating the utility systems increases every year. Those costs are passed along to the customers. Then there are franchise fees. When companies that provide cable TV, telephone, electric, trash collection, and other industries use city property to distribute their services, Grandberry collects rental fees, also known as franchise fees or rent for the use of public property. Another revenue generator for the city is the aviation fuel cells and handrails at the airport. Those more than offset the cost of operating the airport, and you can't talk about the airport without pointing out the estimated $17 million in positive economic impact it has annually on the community. And there are other sources of city revenue. When you apply for zoning change, have the building inspected, or need another of the many other services provided by the city to cover the cost of service, we have to charge a reasonable fee. Those fees are evaluated each year to make sure they are in line with surrounding cities. In Grandberry, we strive to give you good value. There are numerous other smaller revenue sources, such as municipal court fines and fees, revenue from parks and recreation programs, events at the Lake Grandberry Conference Center, even interest collected on cash in the bank. All are meticulously tracked by the various city departments and cataloged for by the finance department. That explains where the city revenue comes from, but are some of the most impactful ways that money is spent? The most important city asset is our staff. After careful review, the proposed budget includes only one physician and additional accountant in the finance department. The city continues to invest about $1 million in street improvements. During fiscal year 2025, the city will use bond funds to refresh roadways in the city's master plan, Gifford Street, Albert Clemens Road, and Plaza East Court due to the economy. This will be a lean year for big new purchases or programs from the annual budget, but there are some. A TV studio will be constructed and equipped. There's a significant technology investment in the Grandberry radio network. A market analysis will be conducted for the community development department. Replacement ballistic vests will be purchased for police officers. Fire station one will be a new roof and other improvements. There will be much needed maintenance at both city hall and the parks maintenance building. City parks maintenance will benefit from new equipment. The electric department will purchase a new bucket truck, new electric and water heaters, plus monitoring equipment, and a highly specialized tool for the water department will be purchased. Funding is set aside for parts to maintain the clean water and wastewater treatment plants, and there will be funding for designing the next generation of electrical service. There will be a public meeting September 3rd asking residents to share their thoughts on the budget. There's a lot of budget information, archives, current budgets, and line by line detail available on grandberry.orgopenup. For the city of Grandberry, I'm Chuck LeDoux.
We do have staff available if you have questions, but we could do that after the public hearing if you'd like.
Okay. Let's just go ahead and open the public hearing. Sir, anyone that would like to do a couple more and talk about the budget? Does any of you want to stand? I don't see any hands. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Staff or council, do you have questions you want to address staff? Mr. Crawford? Anyone? Who wants to?
Mayor, on page 15 of our proposed budget that was handed out to us, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the public that this budget, and I'll re-verbage on that, this budget will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of $363,512. That's 3.58% of what? Of that amount, $177,716 is tax revenue to be raised from new property added to the tax roll this year. You know, so that's the specific language when you read it in there that says it's a tax increase. I just want y'all to understand that we're not increasing our tax rate. It just means that we're generating more revenue based on the, a couple of factors that go into hand, you know, the new properties that come in, the valuations of the properties. So we're, as City Council votes, you know, on this tax rate, we're keeping the tax rate at 38.5 cents. So I just want to make sure that y'all understand that, and that is expressed to the vote that the city itself is not raising their tax rate. That's pretty much everything else. You know, we've done this for two years, you know, we've kept the tax rate in comparison to all the other cities around. I think we're doing a good job on the City Council to keep that rate low. Thank you very much, Mayor.
So, other comments or questions? Well, this is, as Councilman Rodriguez pointed out, there is a, some very specific verbiage, and we have, part of that verbiage is that we will ratify the property tax increase reflected in the budget, the dollars that are reflected in the budget. So we will have two motions, and these motions are record votes, which will be, will do by hand. So I'm going to read, upgrade the motion and then ask for confirmation of that motion if you can. Motion number one is to adopt ordinance number 24-46, approving the fiscal year 2024/2025 annual operating budget. So, Mr. Wilder makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Aldridge makes second. Any other discussion? I'm going to go ahead and call for the votes on this. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion number one passes, skips them out. Motion number two is, the motion to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2024/2025 annual operating, like annual operating budget. Your motion? No movement? Mr. Aldridge makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Flynn makes second. All the favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That passes six and O as well, so we know 2025 budget. Great job on that, all the staff. So we're going to move to 7.2, and this is to consider adopting number, all ordinance number 24-47, approving and letting a property have a lower tax rate for the city of Grandberry for fiscal year 2024/2025. Mr. Crawford?
Thank you, Mayor. As Councilmember Rodriguez mentioned, this is the same rate as last year. I want to add to that comment a little bit. We're able to keep this tax at this rate in spite of the 65% cost increase to construction that we've experienced, in spite of the 50% increase for materials that we have to use for the water treatment plant, for our drinking water, and also for our wastewater. The costs are spiraling upwards due to inflation, and I think it's important that we recognize that staff, department heads have looked at their individual budgets, tightened the belt on those. You don't see a big increase in operating supplies, even though the inflation has hit. We're holding steady, but let's face it, if it wasn't for the new growth that's occurring, we would have to increase our tax rate higher than this. So I just want to count our blessings that we are... So I just want to count our blessings that we are continuing to grow in a rate uncommon throughout the nation. If you look, housing starts are slower nationwide than they've been in a long, long time, in over a decade since 2008, numbers in many cases. And that's due to the interest rates. But for some reason, the growth in Hood County and in Granberry continues to grow because of, we're a great place to live and everybody wants to be here. And that's allowed us to keep this rate at this, at this steady rate in spite of the adversity that we're facing economically. So, you know, most of this is, part of the tax 20 cents, 20.2 cents goes for debt service and 18 cents goes for operating expense. So when you look at that, you consider, okay, round it up to 18.5 cents. That's easier to multiply than 18.2716. But still, the debt, the debt service plus the maintenance operation for a house of $300,000 is $1100. That's less than $100 a month. If you were paying HOA fees, you'd be paying a lot more than that for a whole lot less services. So congratulations to our staff for putting their budgets together and working together, and for you, council, for working and striving to keep this rate as low as we can. Every year, we try to do that. So thank y'all for that.
Mayor. This is, I just want to say that it takes a lot of leadership, a lot of vision, and a person to execute that mission. And Chris, I just want to say thank you for providing that guidance to staff. And thank you for the rest of the councilmen for looking at the budget and seeing how we can just maintain the tax rate at the rate that we have it at. I just want to point out the no new revenue tax rate for this year was .3937. We didn't even go to the no new revenue tax rate. We didn't increase the tax rate for the city up to that point. That gave us, you know, almost, almost more than half a cent that we could have raised that for other services that we could provide for the city. But the leadership in the financing group has done an outstanding job on maintaining our balance. Not only that, but I just want to point out, you know, when we moved forward with this wastewater treatment facility, the cost of those, of that project was close to three times that amount that was projected for our budget at that time. And the staff really did a great job of looking at all the different departments on where we can pull that money. That way, we didn't have to request it from the citizens. So I just want to say thank you, Chris, for saving us the tax on increase, or the tax increase that we could have been subject to because of the three times more of a construction cost for that wastewater treatment facility. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, sir.
Other comments? I think we're all extremely proud of the work the finance group did of putting it together, but all of the others did just to bring it together. This didn't happen a lot. This was like a month, a month, a quarter, a year. It's a year. It started the new one next week sometime. Let's, this too has some very specific language. I will go ahead and go ahead. Comments, questions? It's not a public, a public meeting, so I'll go ahead. And I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 24-47 letting the property tax rate of 38, we do, .3850 per 100 property valuation for tax year 2024-2025. For the purpose of maintenance and operation, the tax rate will be 20.202284. And for the payment of principal and interest of the outstanding debt of the city of Granberry, the tax rate will be .182716. I'll entertain a motion to...
Mayor.
Yes, Mr.?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 24-47.
As written here in the...
As stated by the mayor.
Very good.
May I second that?
And Mr. Wilder second that. And I'm going to do it right. This one is, this is a motion for records. So all the favors say aye and raise your hand.
Roll.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Gordon.
Aye.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Wilder.
Aye.
Mr. Obergdahl.
Yeah, aye.
Aye. Mr. Vale.
Aye.
And mayor decides. So that will pass six and a half. All right.
Thank you, council.
You guys, yeah, we still here. Number 7.3 is also a public hearing. We will consider approving the request to Gail Douglas to replant lot 1R Block 5 of Shore Division 1401 acres located at 105 Harmon Court. Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mayor. Y'all seen this before. This is the final pass to get the replant completed. I'll turn it over to the chair, Wally, our director of community development, to review this item.
So this is our location map. The site is located on the Harmon Court, right there off of the lake in probably 377. It's outlined in that map in Teal. And size is currently 1.1 acres. The Almanac stated request to divide that lot into two lots for the purpose of several family development detached lines. Site was similar to our 12, not 21, well, it was the now in city. This is the drawing of the replant showing the two lots being created. Variants is reviewed by the city engineer and development review team. Supporting varies as to not approve those local streets. The 377 highway to urban standards, which treats success, and the highway is the state's responsibility. And also the other ends was not to connect to the sewer system. This has a agreement for onsite treatment. And the nearest sewage system is 500 feet away and probably not be required to tie again. The city engineers have been now on support. And these are just experts from that's got now just fine with the differences. Staff signed the approval of the replant. And all these 12 plans are officially recommended approval of the replant. And these are Republican options. Any other questions?
No questions. So, please, staff.
Being questioned, so the staff. I'll entertain a motion, Mr.? What is this?
Public hearing.
Uh, do it. I'll open the report for public hearing. See no one. No one raising their hands. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. So now we entertain a motion to consider approving the request of Gail Douglas to replant lot 1R Block 5 of Shore Division 1401 acres located at 105 Harmon Court.
Some move, Mayor.
Mr. Vale. Next motion.
Second.
Mr. Obergdahl seconds. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Pass six and a half. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. This is a public hearing. We're going to consider adopting ordinance number 24-48 approving the request of Ben Ken to amend plant development slash lot commercial located at 5260 East US Avenue 377. Crawford.
Today, we received an email from the developer for this project, and they've asked for it to be removed from the agenda. We don't know what that exactly means, so I could get legal counsel to give us his advice that we've talked about.
Yeah, the email the applicant sent, it was pretty late in the day. We didn't get some clarification as to what exactly they mean. They didn't use the correct terminology to effectively withdraw the application. So what I would suggest is that you make a motion to postpone definitely to the September 17th, I believe it is, 17th meeting. And that may give us some time to verify if they're removing just their amendment or if they're abandoning the entire project.
So here, you recommend that we make a motion to postpone definitely, which is September 17th, 2024. The review schedules, city of Granberry council meeting. And we would address that at this point in time, or at that point in time. So, I will, do you want to go ahead and open the public meeting? No, we'll carry that. We'll carry that. We'll carry that as well. Okay. So do I hear a motion to postpone definitely to September 17th? Mr. Vale.
Mayor, make a motion to postpone this agenda definitely to September 17th.
Right. So...
Second.
Mr. Wilder seconds. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. We'll pass six and a half. Thank you. Another public hearing. 7.5, to consider adopting ordinance number 24-49 approving the request of Peter Thomas to resell from residential 7,000 R7 to plant development slash EDR7 located at 1,001 Loop 567 North with many boxes road.
Thank you, Mayor. This too is not an unfamiliar project. This is what we call El Dorado subdivision located in the perimeter, interior perimeter of, what's the street name? Summerlin?
Summerlin.
Summerlin Road, Summerlin Street. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Wilder to fill you in on the details of what we're proposing.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary of Management. So again, this is our location map for this site. The site's outlined in Teal. You can see there that there's been some, or present activity that was shown on this aerial. The site is 33, approximately acres. It is proposed with 121 residential lots and three HOA lots. And you've seen this, you saw this as a plan and at the time of study, you see this about a year ago. They were, at that time, they were going to standard R7s on 1,000 foot block minimum with all of its development standards as in the R7 district. And at this point, they've submitted a request for a plant development to enhance side yards setbacks alone. And this shows the current zone with the R7. We have a proposal with plant development for R7 district. Anyone open that? And the purpose of the plant development is to allow five-foot setbacks on each side of the residential lots with a total 10-foot combined minimum. And the standard R7 zoning requires five feet on one side with conuration total of 15 feet for each lot. So what this does is it reduces the overall amount of open space throughout development if they elect all lots to have, making use of that full setback reduction. So that's the impact resulting from the request. This is their site plan, the site layout from the R7. Project does not change, it's just requesting a smaller setback to a larger project as I understand them a lot. The surrounding area is larger lots. And when the project came through, there were commitments for larger lots throughout. And those occur, mostly aren't actually northern end, but there are larger lots on other areas of the project where the curvature of the street is wider or lots occur on the end of the blocks. And this particular site is showing a landscape plan. They were committed in their standard zone, they're planning for a small park that's being carried forward. And the landscape along the Loop Highway is also being carried forward. So it's just little detail shots of those proposals as a reminder those are being carried forward. With APD, the zoning ordinance does require those lots to be incorporated into the ordinance and so landscape and site plan and so on, the elevations that they're proposing. And remind you, if you desire APD, you can incorporate elevations into the ordinance. Staff is recommending denial and you might consider wanting to include the ordinance. Could be all of those plans, site plan, landscape plan, E as well as the elevation. The quote that is listed is writing property owners that are in the city limits. So therefore, we only have three notices sent out. It was also published in the newspaper and all required by state laws of the ordinance. We received no letters of support of the project. We did receive one letter in opposition to the request from the nearby neighbors. My direction, sorry about that. Staffs are putting denial at the request for the APD request. And the plans of commission and our petition of approval for the change. And these are your voting options. Again, as a reminder, you can consider to your daddy if those exist to APD. Any questions that we have to respond to? Thank you.
Counsel.
Mr. Grand, I just asked you one quick question. So here, PSE approved it, said it's approved. The staff is recommending denial. Can you tell me what the wider difference?
Yes, the staff took a look at the history of the project and the rationale for the R7 and larger lots. There's quite a bit of input back when the R7 was found. And the context of the site, the largest, larger lots was near larger lots with greater open spaces nearby. So we felt that the standard setbacks were more compatible.
So with the standard setbacks, there'd be fewer home buildings?
Yeah, the same number of homes. It's just a reduced setback on each side of the home.
But if you increase the setbacks, doesn't that decrease the amount of land that you have available for each of the lots? Wouldn't there be fewer homes?
I see your concern. I apologize. Maybe there was a constant, a statement that was confusing. They're actually reducing and making the setbacks smaller.
So to answer your questions, Skip, what it does is, if you increase the setback, in other words, leave it alone, where it's already established, it'll be a smaller house. So...
Five feet narrower.
Five feet narrower total with the house. If you look at the landscape plan that's in your packet, it'll give you the dimension of the footprint of the building that can be built in the building envelope of that new setback.
Okay.
And anyway, I remember having this meeting, y'all the two, about the owners. This project's gone on a long time.
And Mayor, this is true. I just, just skip, also, we've, they've added, you know, we had to change the future land use map on this one and the zoning on this one. And also, with those two action, it added nine additional lots to this subdivision at the very entrance of it. It was supposed to be like commercial in the front.
Where those nine, where one through nine is at, that was supposed to all be commercial.
So that was added with the board's, the board's action last time to change that future land use and the zoning on that one as well.
Other comments? The, good. Mr. Wilder.
Yeah, I want to kind of reiterate a little bit what Skip was saying. So if we leave it the like it is, then they have, the houses have to be five foot narrower. You know, an issue I have, can you put the drawing back up, the site plan?
Landscape.
No, not the landscape, the site plan. That one. I remember having a conversation when this project was started, and a lot of folks from Summerlin were here. So you said you sent out three notices. There's like 20 lots around this. I don't understand the three notices part of.
Sure. The notice.
Oh. Okay, there's still adjacent property. But anyway. Anyway, so they were here, you can see the lots all around this property are, are huge lots, real nice big lots. And they were real concerned about having multiple families and multiple, you know, several lots backing up to one property. And I remember there was a conversation where they said, well, the outside lots of this project can be larger, so that, that won't be a big issue. And I'm looking at the second one in from the left, he has six neighbors in his backyard. The one next to that has five neighbors in his backyard. To me, the purpose for this, what they're asking here is so they could put a little larger house on each lot, where they simply could have cut one lot out per street or maybe two and have plenty of width. But maybe, maybe even slot wider, if they wanted to put larger houses on, make the lot slightly wider. And I know the developers, you know, they always want to get as many lots in as they can, you know, because there's more money there, and I get that. But, but still, this project is huge and the lots, each lot could have been slightly wider if they wanted wider houses. I, I don't have a question, that's just my comment.
Other questions? Then I, I didn't have any other question. I was looking at the, the individual that had the, the negative and not, you know, certainly not all of it, it was about the lot size. But also wanted to address, they, they made this comment, that one or two lots, why don't they address specific lots? Have all of the lots, did we change the, uh, the setbacks on all of the lots, correct?
We haven't yet.
Oh, or the proposal, so we would set back on all of us, it's not just addressing one or two lots. But no homes are being added from while we approve or, and so therefore I'm assuming, correct me, uh, that no additional services will be required, assume water.
That's correct.
No, it, it, this whole thing is houses can be wall to walls, ten feet, five foot setbacks on the sides. You add two feet or so of overhang on the, on the roof and your, the roofs will be, what, six feet apart, seven feet apart? The roof lines? That, that, and that's what they're asking for. You know, the neighborhood I live in is an R seven lot, and so we have the same thing. So it's five feet on one side, fifteen feet total. So you can add five feet on one side and ten on the other, or they can split it more like seven, seven. We're only talking about five feet. And that's, that's what they're asking for, is to make, to make, to make, they only make the footprint of each house five feet wider. To me is the purpose for this. And that's why I just said, if each lot was slightly wider, if that's what they wanted, if they wanted houses to be that size, then maybe the lot should have been a little bit wider.
Other comments? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public, uh, meeting portion of the conversation here. Uh, anyone that would love to step forward to speak at the public, uh, place right here, the, uh, the podium.
I need to add a form, can I say something?
About this item, about, yes, about this item.
On that picture.
Uh, when you get up there?
Faylandum, seven oh seven north Avlon Park. On that picture, it looks like there were only two little small park areas and they were both on the same side of the, that big area. It seemed like to me they needed to have some park areas over on the other side or in the middle or something. You have all those houses and just have one little space or two little tiny spaces for parks is my only concern. I may be legal, but it doesn't look like it's good.
Link to the sender. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name's Peter Thompson, a developer in El Dorado. So I'm, I'm here mostly to answer questions and no concerns that you might have, but I must say that what we're dealing with here is, is our desire to build a larger, wider, more appealing front elevation on the house. This has been done, this five foot on either side has been done very successfully in numerous communities here in Grandberry. Arbor Lakes being one of them, uh, Abe Landing, I believe, has some of this in it. So we, we originally started with straight zoning with the seven and, with, with the ten and the five. Our builders came to us and said, we want to build a little bigger house and a little bigger product and a little more appealing front elevation. We need a wider footprint, we need a fifty-foot footprint on a sixty-foot lot. So the decision that you have to make is, do you want to stay with what it is which allows for a much smaller house to be built there? Which I don't think the surrounding neighbors would be very rough. Or grant the, the variance on those side setbacks so we can build a, a, a wider house with a better looking elevation. We're not, we're not adding more lots, we're not adding more services, we're not changing the plaque, all we're doing is changing the side yard setbacks.
Ms. Wilder raised a question about could this easily be, or not easily, but could it also be accomplished by, you know, taking a, a lot, two lots out of the middle and, and, you know, bringing those together? In other words, making, keeping the same, uh, setbacks that you, that you have and then build a larger house then?
It, it's not practiced anymore, the water and sewer's all been put in, everything is, all the infrastructure is complete, it's paid. Uh, we're, we're several months from being complete, so that really doesn't work anymore.
Other questions? May I start, proceed? Others who would like to comment? Is anyone standing? I'll go ahead and close the, uh, our wait just a second.
No question.
No.
We have, per the gentleman's statement, do we have any equal protection law issues?
No.
Some other questions? I'll close the public section. Uh, your motion to adopt other this hundred twenty-four dash forty-nine approval, request to Peter Thomas to resell from residential seven, R seven, to plan development, R seven, P D R seven. Located in one oh one, Loop five sixty-seven north of the many boxes road. Clear motion. Make a motion to approve. Mr. Carter, next motion to approve. I hear a second. I hear a second. Go on three times. I hear a seven, so the motion fails for another second. I hear any motion on, uh, other number seven, four or five. Uh, will fail for lack of motion. Going to seven point six, consider approving amendment three to the facilities, approve the amendment of I twenty-one, I show three to the city of Grandberry and one forty-four residences to extend the time agreement for six months.
Well, y'all are aware of this project on probably one forty-four. The, the owner of this property has gone through three developers, who of course is, the second one passing away as he was moving forward. So their, their developer, they finally got their permit from fixed off for the deceleration lanes and they have accomplished those. Uh, they need another six months to finish this out. Staff believes it's a reasonable request to keep us from getting involved in colliding the bond, so we recommend approval of this extension for six months. And of course, I've got, uh, planning department and, uh, director count over here, we need to speak on it, we can bring it up, so, pretty simple.
Anybody have comments? No? I've noticed that there has been a lot of progress on lots over the last two, two and a half months there now. And trying to touch those.
Yeah, they finally got their deceleration lanes put in, but they also built ten houses in this subdivision as provided for in our ordinance to allow that to happen. Due to the preparation of part of the subdivision ready to go, so, uh, we've limited it to that ten, but they were able to do that. And so I think they had opened house in one of them this week. But they're, they're almost finished, got a few cleanup items to go on the, on the subdivision improvements to make, to get it.
Comment? Do I hear a motion to approve amendment three to the facilities, approve the amendment of I twenty-one, I show three to the city of Grandberry and one forty-four residences to extend the retirement agreement for six months. Some movement. Mr. Bayard, next motion?
Second.
Mr. Carter, next second, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes say aye. Hear my name, I'll pass six and a half. Next one is also a public hearing. Consider adopting orders under twenty-four fifty, approving the requests of the city of Grandberry to amend section eleven point D, eleven point two, one D, architect of the city of Grandberry is all important.
As you're aware, uh, this generated this conversation around the development of pickleball courts. And so, uh, staff has been working and has presented some, some of these items. I'll let Ms. Wilder take over and she tells about where she's been on this, uh, research that's been done and the P and Z recommendation to you. Thank you.
Thank you. So as Mr. President alluded to, um, we have seen that in development of a couple of pickleball court courts in the community. Um, those, uh, had some, some concerns on parking ratios and, uh, they, both, you know, some studies that showed that pickleball courts and their zoning ordinance were not in the right parking ratio. So we've come forward with this proposal to amend the zoning ordinance to add a specific parking ratio related to pickleball courts. And when we evaluated this, um, in sign of the parking, we were using the amusement center commercial. And so this, this proposal will put us away from that and establish a new parking ratio. We did a comparable cities analysis, that's in your staff package. And we also evaluated the professional engineering studies and the I T E transportation planning handbook. These all came down to a parking ratio of six parking spaces per each court. In addition, um, we're including a one parking space per every three spectator seats. So if they do have seating for spectators, that will also be accommodated. Um, this would align the zoning ordinance with what we've studied and, um, put us in a good position for, um, projects that come through in the future of the local courts. So staff's recommending approval of that proposal, the planning commission also recommending approval. Uh, these are your voting options, if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Here, I have a comment with, I would hope that would resonate with what the council's considering tonight. I think if we change this code to, to meet these new standards, I hope that it will eliminate this constant request that we get to reduce that parking, uh, standard and look for variance. Do you think this will accomplish that?
That's my hope, and it's, I would think, for the most part, it should. And based on our full study, we looked at many cities, um, the I T E handbook is the, the national standard of the competition.
So you, you fill my pain up, I see the developing community want things and it seems like it doesn't matter how good we get it, they still want it better. And I hope that we're gonna send a message that as the council approves or rejects this, that's what we're gonna live with going forward. So I just wanted to clarify that a little bit, frame it a little bit for everybody.
Thank you. Uh, Kira, on the cover page, it said, uh, to propose, the very last sentence on the cover page, it says to propose amendment, amendment, but add the line, uh, for pickleball courts and sports courts. So my concern is the sports courts and what's defined as a sports courts. Can you explain that to me?
So often courts are thought of as, as tennis courts, handball courts, football courts now. Um, you can sort of that net courts, those, those vibration capabilities that have that kind of, um, small number of player courts.
So would, would that definition be part of this amendment? That way there's no confusion when we look it up in the zoning ordinance or anybody else that looks up in the zoning ordinance to figure out whether a basketball court is a sports court? Or a tennis court is a sports court, is that gonna be in there as well?
Right, um, we don't have basketball courts specifically called out, um, but we also, um, recognize that not all uses can be listed. You know, like the table, if you can imagine how, how long it took.
Yeah, my pickleball was never an issue in Grandberry at all. And then, you know, now we're having, having to deal with it and have to add it into our zoning ordinance. Which, you know, big cities are probably dealing with the same thing, just Grandberry's down there.
You know, for, for ease of tonight's purpose, the agenda was, what it presented, uh, consider that and if council would like to direct staff to come back with another amendment to refine the definition, we can do that very easily. So, uh, instead of trying to do it on the fly and make a mess of it tonight, be more methodical and, uh, spell it out even in a deeper definition that we'll be able to discuss tonight. But I think the, the sense is, is, uh, there's a good feel for what you're wanting, uh, to make it developer friendly and also not create excess parking deserts, uh, for facilities that may or may not need it. The, the other side, the point of, I think it's important to consider both sides of this whole issue, is we're allowing people to develop facilities for a purpose of court sport activity. Should that business fail, should that business sell, uh, should something change the dynamics and that sport go away? I don't see it happening, but, you know, worst case scenario, buildings outlast businesses. And that's part of the, the responsibility we have in, in the long range plan of the city is to ensure that the building can accommodate something else at a later date. And, and there's still be adequate parking for that use of that building in a like commercial district or whatever district it is. And, and I think that, uh, the issue that we're experiencing in our central business district is a good example of that. We've got a, a, an area that goes all the way to Redwood Track, the central business district. And those businesses aren't required to do any offsite parking, onsite parking. Uh, they're relying strictly on street parking and total parking lots. And so that's gonna cause us to have to get more creative in the future with more parking in the central business district. So, I mean, there's pros and cons to everything and of course, staff and the planning zone is recommending this amendment and, uh, uh, we, we hope that it solves the problem, so. But look at it from a more of a form-based code perspective that, you know, a building's gonna be there hopefully fifty years from now, that business may or may not be, still be there. There may be something else in that building and we hope that we're, got a footprint big enough to accommodate the future growth of whatever happens in that, so.
Other, other comments or questions?
Mayor, Bayard?
So the two facilities that we have for us now, this parking accommodates the two facilities that we approved, correct?
Kira, do you have an answer to that question?
I just got the parking ratio exactly with the numbers, that, um, the approvals were based on the I T E analysis with the six court.
I, I, I just remembered there were so many, particularly IHOP, there were so many iterations about parking and we did a whole bunch of things around it. The other two pieces of this, and personally it brings up a great point that you always have to think ahead of what the building's gonna be somewhere down the road and it may not be a pickleball court or not. Um, because one facility, IHOP, I remember in that discussion Tony mentioned there would be no spectators on the court, so that kind of has a little bit over there. Uh, and the other one, obviously, I think the, I can't remember what the number of seating in the restaurant was, one thirty-five, one sixty-seven, whatever the number was, pretty big restaurant. And so I, I, I just hope that takes into that into account because it's not just six, eight, nine pickleball courts there. There's also a restaurant there that we, they need to make sure that patrons have enough parking in the. There's also a restaurant there that we, they need to make sure that patrons have enough parking in there. So just a, just a comment on that.
I'd like to follow up. I did find that data for you. So the house of pickleball was proposed at ten point five per court. So that's more. And then sporting pickleball on three seventy-seven was at the six per court.
Well, thank you, Kara.
What about the, the question was raised about the restaurant. Is that a differential or?
Right. For the three seventy-seven project, the restaurant was calculated separately.
It was, okay. Thank you for that clarification. I clearly recalled it. Thank you.
Questions? I'm gonna go ahead and do a question. I'll go ahead and open the public meeting portion. Three o'clock. So I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And we'll learn ten motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-four fifty, approving the request of the city of Grandberry to amend section eleven point two point D, parking table of the city of Grandberry zoning ordinance.
Some move.
Mr. Wilder makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes say nay. Your name is, that's passed. Now move to seven one eight. Consider the approval of the authorization to issue requests for proposals for administrative services and requests for qualifications for engineering services for the twenty twenty-three U.S. Economic Development Administration Disaster Supplemental Funding Grant and authorize an expenditure of one million nine hundred and forty-five thousand and adopt ordinance number twenty-four dash five one, amend the operating budget for the airport fund in the amount of one million nine hundred and forty-five thousand, twenty twenty-three E D A disaster supplemental funding. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. This is more of what you already heard. We've received the one point five million dollar award for this road. That's, that's from the economic development administration for the federal government. And Lance has worked really hard on this with the consultant firm before he changed jobs and left us. And in the interim, I handed it off to DCP city manager Michael Ross. And so he's put this event out, out together. And also he's going to be our project manager on this project. So I'll turn it over to handle it and go through the whole items.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Chris. As Chris said, on September fifth of twenty twenty-three, city council did approve the resolution for this, to authorize the submission of this grant to the Economic Development Administration. And July ninth, we had the great news that we had been successful with grant application. We received that notice for the one million five hundred and forty-two thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. The next step, which is what this is all about, is asking council to authorize our ability to advertise for requests for proposals for the grant administrator to assist us with this next phase of work and for the request for qualifications to hire an engineer to design and then help us do the construction administration as well. So an R F P, grant administrator, R F Q, engineer. And then the third component of this, this is a reimbursement type of grant. So we front all of the money, which is one point nine, excuse me, one million nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we have to come out of pocket. And then as we make monthly payments during construction and for engineering and everything else, we should get reimbursed from the E D A for each of those immedals. But we have to fund it, have all the money appropriated, which is what is part of this, this evening. So we are asking for the approval to authorize requests for proposals for administrative services, requests for qualifications for engineering services, and then to amend the operating budget by ordinance number twenty-four fifty-one for one, one million nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
Mr. Bell.
Mayor, I'd just make a comment, Michael. Just a terrific job that Chris made here from Lance and the, the staff of this. Just a great grant. It's a, you know, a project that we desperately, desperately need, that we really need out the airport as we work towards expansion and, and completion of the new runway terminal buildings, that whole area over there. So just a great job. And to get a grant to pay for eighty percent of this is just the home run in my mind. So a great job.
I might add that part of this grant is pending the creation of eighty jobs. And there was original timeline that was set forth that's not going to happen. But we need to work through that process with the E D A to assure them that the jobs will ultimately be created over a specific time period that has not changed. So with that in mind, you know, we're still hoping that we can pull this together. And we're working with the developer on those jobs and the promises that were made for Lance back last year. So it's kind of where we're at on, on that contingency thought process. But this is an internal road, was it mentioned, that goes within the, from the old runway area to the new runway area, internal to the airport. And so we're proud, and it will really substantial tie the, the working internal parts of the airport together to make it more efficient for the creation of jobs. And it's a great opportunity to apply for federal funds. Anytime we can get, that's one thing our professor, all of our professors in public administration said. Always look for the federal dollar and always chase it because if you don't get it, someone else will. So that's what we've done.
Thank you.
And this grant, one million nine hundred and forty-five thousand, but the city will be out of four hundred and five thousand tomorrow.
Yes, sir. That will be ours, twenty percent.
So four hundred and five thousand, we get a program that turns road, two lanes, three lanes?
It's, it's a twenty-four foot road.
So it'll support two-way traffic.
Yes, sir. Also provide for fire protection.
Right, sir. Right. And that, that is the breakdown, yes, sir, eighty, twenty percent, as you said. The catch, of course, is if the project, the bids come in higher than that, we're on the hook for anything above. This is capped. The E D A portion is capped at the one, the one point five.
Mr. Rodriguez, one down earlier, but quicker is better.
Right. The construction costs have gone up sixty-five percent on roads in the last four years. That was brought out at the last meeting. So holy crap, that just keeps you fine.
Any other comments or questions? Here are your motions with the approval of the authorization to issue requests for proposals for administrative services and requests for qualifications for engineering services for the twenty twenty-three U.S. Economic Development Administration Disaster Supplemental Funding Grant and authorize expenditure of one thou, one million nine hundred and forty-five thousand and adopt ordinance number twenty-four dash fifty-one, amend the operating budget for the airport fund in the amount of one million nine hundred and forty-five thousand.
Mayor.
Some move. Mr. Bell makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Johnson seconds. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes say nay. Your name is, approve six and a. Now, we go to seven point nine and seven point ten. These are battles. Seven point nine is a battle for places eleven, fourteen, the board trustees for the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Control. And as you know, Mr. Crawford is on that board. And I just had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, one of the nominees here is actually at that meeting. She had nothing but good things to say about Mr. Crawford. We argued for a while. He came back and said, it is a, well, as you might expect, Mr. Crawford does, these are not sitting and sipping committees. These are actually working committees that are putting together the plans for the future for not just City Grandberry, but the cities of Texas. And having our voice there is a big, big plus. And having Mr. Crawford in those meetings is a very big plus. So the first nominations we have are for the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Control. The process, we can take each one of these, make a motion for each one, and, you know, count, count those. Or as I was, as I know is true, it's not just what I was told, but it is true that the incumbents are, they've already gone through the training program. And having just been through the training program over the last two, three years, yes, that's a, that's a big plus. So I should ask all the others, ask for a motion to approve the incumbents for each of these places, eleven through fourteen, the board trustees for the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Control. I'll make that motion. If I can get a second.
Second.
Mr. Wilder makes second. So all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes say nay. That's approved six and a. Of course, there are many other entities that will also be included in their ballots. I believe it makes, I guess you have to do this by September thirty. Same, same approach for consider submitting the official ballot for the election of region eight director of the west of the Texas Municipal League T M L Board of Directors. We also have individual votes with this closely on the T M L Board of Directors, Mr. Rodriguez. He is not on the ballot, but we do have four people on that ballot. One is an incumbent. Actually, having to know all of these people, we really can't make a bad choice here. So in my opinion. Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you.
And Mayor, the way they voted for these region eight director and board of directors is, is new to the entire region eight. So John McKenzie was, was the president at one time for region, region eight, for T M L region eight. And now he's, he's moved up to being a board of director. So he's, he's had the experience and the training as you have noted on all the other inter-riskable members as well. So most of the progression of how it works is usually you, you'll get on the board either as a second vice president or the first vice president, move from there to be the, the president of T M L region eight. And then from that point, that, that president moves up to be the board of directors in representation for region eight. And prior to John being the region eight board of director, it was Tito Rodriguez who did the same path, you know, going through the same pathway as being the second vice president, first vice president. And then he eventually became the president of region eight, and then he moved up to board of directors for region eight. Now he is one of the board of directors for T M L. So in, in, for all the council members, I would say the same thing would go with this one. I would highly encourage the incumbent on this one.
Would you make a motion?
I would make a motion that we elect John McKenzie incumbent as our official ballot. Second.
Mr. Wilder seconds. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the votes say nay. That will pass. Okay. So deliberation from business. And we now go to citizen comments. We do have citizen comments that are available here for us. So we'll go ahead and read the, uh, to the process, our procedures. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes for our combined total of thirty minutes. Allow at this time of comments regarding matters not listed on the agenda. City council will be allowed to receive the input or information for future agenda items, but will not be allowed to interact with discussions. So Mr. Daniel Lakey. Close your name and your address. So we can actually thank you for this.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you very much. My name's Daniel Lakey. I live at eight two twenty-five Contray Creek Road. Moved to Grandberry about three years ago on the south side of town. I live over next to Wolf Hollow one, Wolf Hollow two. I'm not here to ask for anything. I need a little bit of support. So Wolf Hollow two just got a grant from the state of Texas. We've got a proof for it to expand another three hundred megawatt plant. That's the size of Wolf Hollow two is right now. However, they have designs to build four of them. So if you want six electric plants at the top of the hill that you can see from Crescent, that's what's coming because that's what they've got a grant to, to start breaking on. They have a meeting with T C E Q on September the ninth, which is here in Grandberry. We weren't able to complain enough to get it to a public hearing. We want to try to get it to a contested hearing. I'm not against power. I'm not against growth. I'm not against business. That plant is too close to too many residential, too many agricultural, too many rural areas to put four more of those plants up there with all the pollution that goes with it. The pollution that's going to come down, is going to come down straight into Grandberry. It's going to land in your lake and you're all going to deal with it in about ten years. So you can either do something about it now or not. We got into the fight with them because of the fight over the Bitcoin plant, which I'm not even going to get into here. But because of that, we found out about this expansion. And we've at least got it to a public hearing. We need to get it to a contested hearing. And we need to get it to not build those plants. To put it into perspective, Wolf Hollow one, Wolf Hollow two, they make about one point two mega, megawatts of power. Okay? It's the same size as the Hamley plant on Lake Arlington, if anybody's familiar with that. That also is a one point two megawatt plant. If you look at that, the EPA says that a person should live about three miles in a radius away from an electrical plant, even the, the gas power plants. Now Wolf Hollow two is supposed to be the cleanest, or one of the cleanest in the country, but there's no guarantee that they're going to keep building those kind of reactors when they, when they build it. The Arlington plant has a three mile radius of industrial area all around it before you get to the residential area. I happen to live six tenths of a mile. I knew it when I bought it and I was okay with the size of the plant. But what they're expanding to, I would have never dreamed of living there if I had to look at six plants up on that hill. And I don't know that anybody here wants to. I gave y'all some paperwork. If anybody wants to join us, you can just sign, put your name on it, put the address, sign it. I'll take it to the T C E Q. I'll be more than happy to file for you. We would love for you guys to come down and be there on September ninth just to help support it. I don't think the plant is ripe for Grandberry. I, it also will add enough pollution that will put us in the same category as Fort Worth, Dallas, Arlington, Austin, San Antonio, and Houston in terms of our pollution levels. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Does Donna, any there? Thank you for staying with us.
Well, thank y'all for, for taking comments. I'm not.
Pull that down.
Okay. Donna, there. My husband and I live at eight thousand two Contray Creek Court, just down the road from the Sherlaki. We're concerned about the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. T C E Q proposed air quality permit number one seven five, one seven three, which is the power plant requesting to add eight more turbines to the floor that they already have there. Basically four more plants added to what they've got. Part of the whole twelve. The T C E Q permit, it says that Wolf Hollow will emit significant amounts of hazardous air pollutants, including but not limited to carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, sulfur dioxide, sulfur hexafluoride, particulate matter, and sulfuric acid mixed, which that can travel a long ways. When my husband and I, when we walk in the mornings, we can see this big cloud coming over our house from there anyway. So if they put that much more, it's going to be bad, y'all. And as he said, there's going to be hearing for the T C E Q representatives. I believe it's going to be at the conference, the Hilton thing, September ninth. And the T C E Q, if they come and they see twenty, thirty people, you know, it's not going to mean a lot to them. So more people can, that can at least show up. If you could speak, that would even be more awesome. But if you could at least show up and support us, support Grandberry to not have this, that would be awesome. Thank y'all so much. Have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Adair. Ms. Royal, Wallace, Walton or Walsh. Ms. Walsh.
Ms. Royal, may I go before Ms. Walton? Shannon Walsh. Shannon Walsh, may I go before Ms. Ellen Walsh?
The sorry, Ms. Walsh.
Yep. Danny, I can give this to her to pass from today. Thank you. I'm Shannon Walsh. I live at 4718 Medina Street in Precinct Two. I'm also the Republican Precinct 211 Chairwoman. So thank you for the important work that you do and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you on a situation that impacts not only Hood County, but the city of Grand River. Earlier this summer, ERCOT CEO Pablo Vegas testified before the Texas Senate Subcommittee on Business and Commerce. And he said that within a few years, the Texas power grid would need to nearly double its capacity from 85,000 to 150,000 megawatts. In response to this information, the committee created the Texas Energy Fund that would offer low interest loans to energy companies in order for them to expand their energy production based on clean, reliable sources. When I read about this, I was supportive of the plan and I still am. It's necessary for our state, it's a good idea. Wolf Hollow Two Power Plant is in my precinct, it's located close to Lake Grand River and it's located very near to the con plantation. The power plant is surrounded by ranches, farms, homes, and churches, it is not an industrial area. Many of these ranchers sell their cattle to locally owned and operated meat markets. This summer, Wolf Hollow Two acquired and was granted this low interest loan. Their plan is to increase their plant from two to 10 turbines, you've heard others talk about that, guys, that's a big increase. Wolf Hollow has also petitioned T C E Q to increase air pollution to unsafe levels. A public hearing, as you've heard, is scheduled for next Monday, September the 9th, and that's why I'm in front of you today. Everyone in my area, including those in the con plantation, received a notice from T C E Q alerting us to the petition and what that would mean for us. The air pollution would increase by nearly 500%. 500%. Part of the letter, and I will read part of that to you now, it says, "The proposed facility will admit the following air contaminants in a significant amount." And you heard Ms. Adair already list some of those. And it goes on to say, "In addition, the facility will admit the following contaminants in significant amounts: hazardous air pollutants, organic compounds, sulfur dioxide, sulfur hexafluoride, and sulfuric acid mix." Now I teach advanced research to doctoral students and I am fluent in statistics, and when I hear the word significant, what that means is it's not even close to normal, it's not close to what is expected, it goes way beyond what is expected. Guys, that, that, those emissions that are going to be produced into the air is not going to stay in Precinct Two, it's coming to the city, it's coming to not only our county but surrounding counties, it's going to be in our lakes, in the grass, in the air, and we will all be dealing with this and I'm asking you to stand with us as we face T C E Q next Monday night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Walsh, Walsh.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name is Lori Walsh, I live at 2727 Meander Road and I spend a lot of time in, next to the plant with a friend who lives right across from it, but I was also concerned about it because this is going to affect all of Grand River. So during the emergency meeting of the Texas Senate Committee of Business and Commerce on June 12th, 2024, which Shannon was talking about, when ERCOT CEO informed our senators that Texas would need nearly twice the amount of energy that it currently produces, cryptocurrency was cited as being responsible for nearly 50% of that growth. Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick issued a statement, June 12th, 2024 via X, as a result of that meeting, saying, "We need to take a closer, a closer look at those two industries, they produce very few jobs compared to the incredible demands they place on our grid. Crypto online may actually make more money selling electricity back to the grid than from their crypto mining operations. Texans will ultimately pay the price. I'm more interested in building the grid to service customers in their homes, apartments, and normal businesses and keep costs as low as possible for them instead of for very niche industries that have massive power demands and produce few jobs." Up until the current cryptocurrency moved into the Wolf Hollow Power Plant property, the power plant ran at about a 66% capacity. Once Marathon began production, Wolf Hollow now runs at nearly 100% capacity. And it was not a peak plant in its original certifications. So then Marathon now uses one-third of this power plant's energy. Wolf Hollow's planned increase is directly related to the Marathon Mine's upcoming expansion, which operates behind the meter and never loses power even when residents do, due to excessive temperatures. Do not be misled, Wolf Hollow intends to increase toxic air pollution in Hood County, including Grand River City, so that Marathon's intended increase can be accommodated, as Shannon was talking about. In addition, there's another permit on the horizon, it's not just for the increase in pollution, they are going to need more water to produce this energy. These are not the Wolf Hollow Two power plants that they're going to put in, they're going to be more along the line of Wolf Hollow One, gas fire. So that water will come from our homes and from the lake. That, if that or not enough, some of that water after it is used will be returned to the lake and it will not be just water going into Lake Grand River. Life as we know it in Grand River will be changed, there will be no more water sports, no more people swimming, no more tourism. If you don't stand with us, we stand to lose this town as we love, that we love. I'm asking for you to respond to this urgent need and help support us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have no other questions. So we're going to move to number nine, U B O Executive, Section 9, we will have discussion made committed by the following sections of the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Section 55107, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, 55107, two deliberation during the meeting, and 551471, consultation of attorney, attorney, trying to play litigation. So we are now at the closest meeting, go into that reception. Reverend City Council, 9/7/3, we are going to reconvene now at 10:01. Announced, Reverend City Council reconvenes in open session, there was no action taken in closed session and all council members are present. General, action. No, no, okay, very good. There being no further business, announced the meeting adjourned.